Village President running out.
Just to have a leader on the foundation.
Oh, yeah.
Never sleep.
Like I said, I'm giving too much.
Probably more than you're right.
I get more sleep in the middle of the day. You gotta go to work, you lose your brain. Take a late night shift last night. All hands on deck while I'm thinking. Yeah.
He just doesn't need those.
But I don't listen to classical music this week. I know what is bad is when my wife's wearing a hat off. And I said, I got some cello and piano all by classical music. And I forgot who it was, Tito Art. Puccini?
They're asleep.
Think he's an opera guy?
Lakers.
Yeah. Because I recognize one song. Neil Carl Bellow or something like that. I heard it's like something about all that. Yeah, it's called Puccini. Oh, of course, it's from Puccini.
I know for a while funk worked on the old.
All right. I keep telling them, I was like, we gotta introduce you to Disco. I was like, I've got all his greatest hits.
Your conference is early.
Oh, that was my mistake.
Some of the stuff that I like, but I got Disco next to me. That's gotta be like a Friday night thing, not a Friday morning.
No, in the Funkadelics, it's Saturday mornings at the.
Funkadelics. Is that George Clooney? Funkadelics or is that a different kind of Funkadelic?
You know, I think that there was a big evolution with Funkadelics. I did learn after my kid was actually into it. Or at least we quiet down in the car. My kid skated the car.
Everyone's like, oh, just throw him in the car and drive around. He's not a big fan. He knows when you're in a ride like this, he starts crying. But there was.
Mine would scream bloody murder.
Yeah. Even when you're driving, even when you're in a room.
All the time.
Yeah. And still figuring out this person.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Yeah.
And as soon as he figures something out, it's gonna change.
I know, because like all the tricks that I had that worked, you know, first week did not work this second year. That's why I think the classical music, if it's working now, I'm gonna ride it out.
Oh, for sure.
It'll change his mind.
Well, if you think about it, it's pretty hard to not be able to, you know, see past your behind. And just like tell everybody what's going on.
You know.
Manhattan used to call that screaming, that they're exercising their minds.
Yeah.
That's good.
Which is good.
Yeah.
You know, he's bored, he doesn't cry at all, he's got all stare, morning made up.
Hmm, yeah. They saw their new parents out when they're in that 100 meter. They say, do you just say, yeah, that's your life. That's wonderful that you have the best fight at his baby. Because you know what's coming, but.
If you thought this one over.
Are we ready, do we have a tape for this? Okay, we're gonna get started again if we're. Are you ready Noah? Stevie, are we ready? Thank you. Okay, good evening, it's 7:30 PM, 7:39 on Monday, August 25th. I'd like to call the Village Brookfield Committee of the Home Meeting to order. Now, can we have a roll call for the committee meeting, please?
Trustee Ketchmark.
Here.
Trustee Whitehead.
Here.
Trustee Hendricks.
Here.
Trustee Naromatsu.
Here.
Trustee Gohouli.
Here.
Trustee Kalusny.
Here.
President Garvey.
Here.
And Noah Wright filling in as deputy village clerk.
Okay, as we, the first item, we have a discussion related to some possible improvements of Eller Park Baseball Field Number Four in partnership with Brookfield Little League. We have a memo from staff, we have representatives from Brookfield Little League here, who by the way, I believe Brookfield is leading five to four in the top of the seventh.
My husband actually just tested, they were tied up.
Tied up, okay.
It's a great game.
It is apparent, it is a very good game, but thank you for the updates. So, we have a memo from staff, Luke is here, I mean, I'll ask Luke to summarize it. We do have representatives from Brookfield Little League Board to talk about it, but this was a project. We appreciate Little League coming forward. They've done with this in the past, we're, you know, coming forwards to make improvements to things that we, you know, would like to make most use of the fields, but we can't always budget for these items, but they're willing to partner with us. So, I'll turn it over to Luke for kind of a summary of the proposal, and then if the Little League Board members would like to add anything, I'll give them the opportunity. So, this time I'll turn it over to Luke Gunderson, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, President Garvey. So, this is referring to Eller Park Field Four. I do have a map, kind of showing the area of where it's at. So, it's kind of near our skate park, we have a pavilion there. What I decided to do was put some distances in, because part of the plan, the main plan is skinning the infield, as you guys can see, the infield has grass. The benefits of skinning the infield is it does open up for more of multi-use field access. And then additionally, the bases, the proposal and scope of work would be 60-foot bases, which are already included, and then adding the additional 70-foot bases. This would help for higher levels of play, the older divisions. That would be your 11, 12, 13-year-olds and the intermediate. And I put some distances in there just to kind of show from the fence line where some of our other amenities are located in the park, just for reference. And then I also put the distance in there from home plate to the outfield, which indicates that it's 200 feet. 200 feet is the minimum space requirement for the field, for the Little League play and for intermediate play, is the minimum is 200 feet, so it does meet that requirement. And no, that's the, that's the basis of this. And then just a reminder, this is just for understanding the scope, this is not approving any work or anything like that, this is just approving the idea of the, of the skinning of the work. And I do have, there's representatives from Brookfield Little League here that they can help answer any further questions or anything in regard.
Sure. And, and I mean, if everyone, I mean, just, skinning just means taking all the grass out of the infield so it can be used for girls softball. And right now, the younger age kids typically use this, but also, I don't know if you're aware, but the Challengers Program has become very popular where, and actually we have someone who's very familiar with the Challengers Program here that could kind of talk to us a little bit about the Challengers Program, but it'd be helpful for them to use them. So, there's, there is separate issues here, the skinning is one issue, the, the 70-foot base anchors is an additional issue, but I mean, we could talk about them separately, we could address them separately. I do have some concerns that I expressed to staff. And Luke, I know the center field dimension is 200, do we ever get the dimensions down the left field and right field line?
On, on our GIS system, I did the measurements of that, it's about 200 feet. So, it's about 200 feet from home plate, from right field and left field down the line.
Okay, that shocks me, I mean, I thought it would be significant, I think it's.
I, I think it's about 197, 198 feet that comes out, so it's pretty close to 200 unless I actually went out there and measured it.
Sure, no, and I mean, and just so, the board might, some of these, the board members will recall it, but previously in, the, the need for 60-foot base, 60-foot bases is the standard Little League bases for kids up to 12 years of age that play up to the major level division. Travel baseball, and there's a new what's called Intermediate League, it's a transition league that allows players to transition before they go to the Babe Ruth level or the Western Conference level and play at Field One, which has 90-foot bases, it's a big jump. So, Little League, Little League National came up with an intermediate program years ago to start this 50-70 league that went, you know, has a 50-foot mound and 70-foot bases to provide that transition year before you go to the full big field. In the past, Little League has, and travel programs have asked for us to include 70-foot bases on some of the fields, specifically when the renovation of Overhold Field was happening. And Overhold's measurements apparently are about the same, because I believe it's 196 or 197 down the foul lines and similar at Overhold. And the board did not approve the installation of the 70-foot bases on that field just because of, it is, Intermediate League does recommend a minimum of 200, but it's also based on experience that our parks are tucked into our parks, which are used for other things. And there was concerns expressed about doing it at Overhold that we do have 12-year-olds, 11 and 12-year-olds and 10-year-olds that have hit home runs out of Overhold. And there's famous stories, and I've witnessed some of them, of them hitting the side of the Village Hall, hitting the roof of the Village Hall, hitting into the concerts in the park at points and things like this. And these are the 11 and 12-year-olds. And the Intermediate League and the travel teams, the travel teams tend to be the best of the best of the kids, and they're the 11, 12, 13, maybe even 14-year-olds. And with these incredible $400 and $500 bats that they use and their size, there was concern, the board did not approve 70-foot base paths being installed at Overhold for that reason. And I think that same argument would apply here. And I do want to remind the board that the skate park is pretty close to their left field, and I think everyone's aware of what the potential plans for that area might be in the future. And I just suggest the board to really consider whether or not we should approve that part of it. The skinning part, I think, I'll open it up for discussion, but, I'm sorry, I should, I kind of jumped in, but we have Kevin Jaworski, who's the field, what's your official title, unpaid title?
So, I am the Vice President of Field Maintenance for Eller Park specifically.
Which means he does a lot of work on the field and doesn't get paid, so.
And this is Christine Ramirez, Vice President of our Challengers Program. And yes, you know, to start with the skinning, it is beneficial for so many different programs, Challenger. The fence is, is a big part of it, our Challenger Programs need to be fenced in. And going to the 70-foot base paths, that's why, as well, this would be helpful for the intermediate, because the only other field we have 70-foot base paths on now is Field Two, which does not have a fence. So, that's prohibitive for the older players. But going back to the skinning, it's also allows softball, girls softball to use the field. Currently, that field is just reserved for boys, boys baseball because of the grass. So, skinning that infield, leveling the mound would allow for Challenger, girls softball, and boys baseball all to use that field. And again, the fence, I'll let Christine talk to both the benefits of having that fence for the Challenger as well as just another field for them to be able to use. Because of the wildly popular growth that we've seen with Challenger, that field is uniquely positioned next to Field Four Hall, or I'm sorry, Field Five Hall, which they are already currently using. And if I'm not mistaken, last year there were so many kids that you were playing two games at once, both in the outfield and infield at the same time at Hall. This would allow for two games to be played at two separate fields right next to them on Saturday mornings. So, I'll let Christine talk to that.
And Christine, why don't you just, you know, summarize maybe what the Challenger Program is for the board members who aren't aware, I think most of us are, but for the public, maybe summarize what the Challenger Program is.
Yeah, of course, the Challenger Division is basically for kids with special needs, physical, intellectual disabilities, allowing them to have the opportunity to play adaptive baseball and softball. So, kind of as Kevin stated, that this year I had 32 players. When we last, the previous year I had 17, and prior to that I believe it was eight or nine. So, yes, we have expanded very much. So, we're looking, really looking forward to being able to let the kids play in an actual field. What I had to do this year was, as Kevin stated, really dividing it into the infield and the outfield, which as you know, the outfield, there was grass and dandelions, not quite ideal, I had to have bases. Obviously, we made it work, and the parents and kids were thrilled, but to be able to actually let them play on a real field and feel like, you know, they're playing an actual game is the ideal situation.
Great. And just to further, for the board, I'm obviously really familiar, and I know a lot of you are familiar, we, we've worked well with Riverside Brookfield High School, the Hall Field is the RB softball team plays there. And especially early in the year when the high school season is going on, that's the only field the girls softball team from RB can play their games on, because it's skinned and it's that size. So, it does cause practice conflicts and game conflicts for the Brookfield Little League Girls Softball Program, because that's the field that they should be on. So, this field that we are talking about, Field Four, does get a lot of use with the younger children right now. It's a smaller field and gets a lot of use, but what, if we were to skin the field, it would provide another option for girls softball and, and the Challenger Program. But just to talk about the fencing issue, it is currently fenced in except for the section down the left field line. Those of you familiar, I think the fence ends under that tree down the left field line that's just past the dugout, and then it doesn't continue all the way to the left field corner, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
But the rest of it is fenced in?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's roughly 75, 80% fenced in with that 20, 25% not being there, about 100, 150 feet of area not being fenced in. This was actually recently brought to my attention that it would be very beneficial for the Challenger Program to close that up, something that we would be happy to add to the project and pay for.
Okay. So, I, closing the field in, so it's completely enclosed, those of you who have coached Little League or been around children, it's tough enough to keep them contained without fences, and you have 32 kids, young children, it's helpful to have a fence, because there's often limited coaches and limited volunteers. And I've seen some of the Challenger Games and events, and I remember you had the RB Boys Baseball Team out there to help them and, you know, play with them and stuff, and it was, it was really, but. So, I guess there's three, kind of three requests here that we're talking about. One is to skin the infield so that softball could play there, it could become more multipurpose use. So, maybe we should talk about these things individually. Do board members have any questions or concerns about the permission to skin Field Four?
No problem.
I just have a general question about whether there are any implications for Parks and Rec programming by skimming, skinning, skimming?
Skinning.
Skinning? The infield.
Like, with skinning, we do have a more, it opens up more multi-use, so we use it for that. Another benefit that I saw with, you know, it being more of a dirt infield with a limestone mix, it does help get the water off of it quicker, as opposed to having the grass. So, it's another benefit of having a limestone mix in the middle, it does help get the water off it quicker so you can get play started again.
Yeah, and to elaborate on that, currently the grass is in somewhat a disrepair. It's not level in a lot of places, it's mounding. So, you know, if we don't take up this project, there's going to mean, need to be improvement to it anyways. The grass is going to need to be fixed, and this kind of kills four birds with one stone. We wouldn't have to do that, we would just skin it, and then again, so many more kids can use the field and different programs can use the field other than just baseball at this point.
Okay. So, in general, is there support from the board to work out a way where we can get Field Four skinned for that purpose?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll just, I'll skip to the other, I mean, because it really wasn't contained in the board memo, but we, me and Kevin did talk this weekend, and based on conversations, it seemed made sense to address this the same time as we're addressing the field. To finish fencing in the field, so it's an enclosed field, I mean, the Brookfield Little League would agree to bear the cost of finishing the fencing end, is there any objection to that?
No, that's wonderful.
And from staff's perspective, Luke, there's no problem or hurts any uses that we have?
Not that I can think of right now, but we, I can look into it and talk with our Parks and Rec staff, who, who's out there, and see if there's any issues, but right now I don't think there is.
I can't imagine, and for all these years, I just think it hasn't been fenced in, because it's been a cost issue. I mean, fencing is very expensive, and over the, I mean, our kids played on that field forever, and it's just, it was always kind of strange, it was, it was a, you know, people literally would sit so close to the third base foul line that they were sometimes actually on the field, which is a little bit of a safety issue too. So, I think it would be a good idea to fence that in.
The field would remain open for community use, right? We're not talking about blocking the field.
No, it's, well, it's not exclusive use, it's, but there's, it's like the other Little League Programs, there'd be the user agreements that cover it and the scheduling and things like that. And for, for all of these improvements, I mean, the league has indicated they're very generous offered to pay for these improvements, but what is the, I'll turn to Adam, what is the process for doing this? They have, they've done bids for, and if I'm not mistaken, these bids for renovation were for the skinning basically and adding the posts, but it wasn't for the fencing, correct?
Correct, the fencing is not part of those quotes yet.
And so, there was three quotes, one from Molitor, one from Sportsfields, and one from Midwest Athletics. Is the board, is the board have to put this out the bid, can they waive bids, can they award the contracts? Or how does this work, Adam?
I, I think what, I agree with what you're saying is that the contract should be between, it's great that the Little League affiliation is doing the work to find the greatest proposal that's going to fit their needs, probably should be come before the board, and the board is the party to the contract. And then there would probably be another agreement for cost distribution, reimbursements of costs between the affiliate and the village. The village, since they'll be the signatory to the contract, they have the ability to, to go with the proposal that the league has found to be the most favorable, go out to bid on it, or they could waive the competitive bidding, just like we've waived competitive bidding in other instances, and go with the proposal that has been recommended by the affiliation.
And we've done this in the past with, actually with Overhold Field. And did Molitor do, was Molitor the one that did Overhold, or is it Sportsfields?
I want to say it was Midwest. Molitor did Field Two for us. We put, I think roughly 18 grand into Field Two two years ago, in a very similar project, adding the lime for drainage, really completely redoing that infield. Molitor did it for us for Field Two then.
Okay. So, I mean, we could rely on a recommendation from the Little League Board based on their experience with these vendors, because this is kind of a specialized area, and while Sportsfields bid may be a little bit lower than Molitor, and it's significantly lower than Midwest, but if, if Little League Board recommended a specific contractor based on past performance and expertise and ability to do and success of past projects, we could, we don't necessarily have to go with the lowest bidder?
That is correct, you could waive bidding.
Okay. So, me and Kevin, we had this conversation about, you know, I'm, I think the board would be open to at least, want to hear the discussion of what's your recommendation of which company you would want based on most recent past experience and areas of expertise for the skinning. So, and same thing with the fencing, I guess you, we'd ask, I don't, they don't do the fencing, I don't know, do they?
Not that I know of.
Okay. So, same thing, if you get proposals for fencing, probably get at least three proposals for the fencing, and then the board can take action based on that. Now, getting back to the, the third issue of the adding the 70-foot bases, I know you, you're, you're putting this in as it would expand the use further to other age levels, but I, I have to say, I still have the same concern that I had with the other fields. I'm a big supporter of 50-70, I'm a big supporter of the travel program. I coached, me and Nicole's husband had one of the first travel teams at that level and stuff, and we wanted to play in Brookfield, but I really don't think it's safe to put in a field there that kids that age play in based on the current conditions of the park and the possible proposed improvements in the park, so.
Very understandable, you and I obviously spoke with this, about this briefly, very recently. I did talk to Dan, our Board President. One possible solution, he said, is we could look into netting to prevent those balls from getting hit into the skate park.
And that's, Dan made the similar offer for Overhold, putting up very high fencing and netting and stuff, and I think, I think the board had the same concerns, that the fencing would have to be so high and for appearance sake, and the netting as opposed to fencing, I think the repair, maintenance and, and look, again, I just, I may be completely wrong, and I know Luke did his best job of getting the measurements, but I truly believe this field is a little bit shorter than Overhold, and I don't believe this was appropriate Overhold. And we really try and make the use of every square inch of park that we have, and by allowing kids that age to play on this, I think it would severely limit the possible uses in the outfield area and stuff. Again, I was just at a concert, a concert in the park Friday night, and I remember I was actually sitting with Trustee Ketchmark, and we've had balls from Little League come into concerts in the park. So, there's 11 and 12-year-olds that have hit the ball that far when it goes in the concerts in the park, and the dimensions there are, and we were sitting more than 20 to 30 feet away from the right field fence where we were sitting, and we've had balls come that far. So, I just, I, I'm opening up to board discussion on it, but I just, I don't think putting in 70-foot bases, we did accommodate, it's Field Two, we did provide 70-foot bases and the 90-foot mounds are the, the, I'm sorry, the 70-foot, 50-70 dimensions on Field Two, correct? And I know there's not an outfield fence on there, but that fence, that park is usable for that, and I understand why for the, the Challengers Program and having that smaller field for the younger children, having the fence to enclose them, I think that's a very strong argument to support it. The out, having an outfield fence on your 50-70 field is so, honestly, so people can say they hit a homerun over the fence, and I think that's really cool and it's really nice, but eventually somehow a fence goes in in the outfield of Field Two with the other uses we have going on there, but I just, I don't think it's safe to put it on this field, so. But I'll open it up to the board for discussions and input from staff or anybody else.
I'm not a baseball aficionado, so I have a question that might be dumb.
Sure.
So, you're moving the bases out further, the field stays the same size, but the concern is because there's older players hitting that they're going to hit it farther. You're not changing the size of the field, these like distances are just to show the space between the fence line and other things in the park, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
If they didn't put the new bases in, then those older kids wouldn't play on this field.
Got it.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's the 50-70 league, so it's like.
I just wanted to re-say it out loud, make sure my.
Absolutely, yeah.
And is that league is 11 to 13-year-olds?
12 to, Dan would know, would know baseball better, I think it's 12.
12 and 13?
12, 13. That's for the Intermediate League, which is a division of international, national Little League, but also, and, and they've been very honest or upfront that there are travel programs, which many of us are familiar with, where even if it's the 11 and 12-year-olds playing in travel programs, some of those fields play on that, and those travel players are kind of the best of the best and the bigger hitters and stuff, so some of those kids, the Brookfield Nationals, one of the common travel programs, would like to have games on those fields, but it's kind of the same concern. And Trustee Kalusny, it was, it was a very good question, because it is, there's no problem putting in the 70-foot bases, making the kids run an extra 10 feet to get a base hit. But it is that the fact that they're going to be hitting the ball a lot farther and over the fence and into other amenities is my concern.
I just wanted to be clear that we, we weren't adjusting the fence line, those were just showing distances between the end of the fence and what is nearby.
Is there a shortage of fields available for that group?
Yes.
Yes, yes, like I said, currently Field Two, just south of there, is the only field that we have with those base posts. But again, not having a fence is, is an issue or something.
They've worked out very, adeptly worked out agreements with other towns, there's one in Hodgkins, I think, down East Avenue that they rent time and use time for, for the, and there used to be one in Countryside behind the Home Depot, 50-70 field there, my kids did play this, and that's where they played. There's just more room, the fences are farther and the outfield is farther, and they're not hitting into other amenities, so.
Yeah. I like the idea of, you know, being able to offer another field for it and, and expanding those, the ability for those leagues to play. I'm going to have to think about it a little bit, because I also, you know, been there and experienced those, some of those 13-year-olds, they're really, and if your child is a pitcher ever and you have them coming up there, it's scary. It really is scary to watch and dangerous, so that's obviously not the outfield issue. But, yeah, I've been kind of in the same situation, to see, to see the balls go flying pretty far these days. So, you got to think about it with that, those distances in the back and the different activities that would be going on. I mean, skate park, 50 feet further is kind of more the, the 20 feet to that, what is that, a bags game over there?
Pavilion.
It's our bocce ball court.
Bocce ball, I have a lot of people playing bocce. Yeah, I mean, I gotta, I gotta think about that a little bit from a safety perspective.
Understandable.
The netting is interesting, interesting idea to, to help that, but.
Can you tell me, maybe this is a question for you, but who, what are the liabilities for the village versus Little League if something happened in the outfield, someone were hit or property was damaged or?
There could be liability for both parties or alleged liability. We do have an affiliation agreement though, but it is our property.
Okay.
I would be agreement on the two, first two items that we were talking about, but I would share the same concern with the, with the 70-foot, you know, bases. I remember when my son was playing, I mean, there was still, I don't know what they called the Little League, was it juniors Little League for the 13, 14-year-olds back then? And then playing Babe Ruth, you know, as a 13-year-old, that's a big field they're playing in. And, you know, 13, 14-year-old, they're some big kids. Playing on here, again, like President Garvey said, it, you know, the kids want to hit a homerun and they can, you know, have fun doing that, but I think we're just creating issues with all the other amenities around there.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, safety is obviously a concern for us as well. But I do appreciate, you know, kind of breaking it up into separate issues, because by no intensive purposes is the 70-foot base posts a, a deal breaker or anything where, where I stand from.
I just have a, a general question.
I just have a, a general question. So, there is another field, Field Six, in the back of Eller Park. Um, I know that the infield is kind of weeded over and it's not used, I think, by the Little League, um, it's not really usable by the community either. I'm wondering if there is any plans for the village or for the league to, what we might want to do with that field?
So, we spoke with Luke and proposed partnering for that field specifically, um, prior to this project, um, but there was a concern, we have a, a priority agreement for these fields. There was a concern of giving us another priority for another field rather than it be open to public use completely. So, that actually was the reason why we transitioned to then looking at Field Four for these improvements.
Kevin's correct. From a historical perspective, when Field Six went in there, we, this Board has, over the years, and we have a great relationship with Brookfield Little League and really try and partner with them, but there, there was issues brought up about having, you know, these priority agreements in the past, it, I mean, it was locked fields, I mean, Overhold and other fields were completely locked, and it's, we've, that Field Six was kind of envisioned as a general community field, that we're not going to schedule, give priority scheduling to anyone else, it's a open field where anyone who's not in Little League or affiliate with any league could go play a pickup game or something else, and we weren't going to tie it up with priority scheduling. It does need work, um, something we'll probably talk about during the budget process, you know, going forward about what we could do, but then it also, from there goes into soccer field usage in terms of what's in the outfield at Field Six, so Brookfield Little League did approach us about that as another possible site, and I think it was, you know, we kind of came to the understanding that based on past practice, it wouldn't be wise to start making that a priority scheduling field for anyone, leave it open and see what improvements we can make to it going forward.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate the, uh, desire for community access and, and not, uh, you know, having the leagues use all the fields. Yeah, I, I do think we should have a conversation, you know, with, about, I'd improve that field for community residents, because right now I think it's not usable for anybody, and like you're saying, it's not usable for the soccer games that are happening nearby, so just in terms of best use of park space, I think we should have a longer-term plan for how to, how to use that space.
So, what I'm trying, I mean, because this is work that we can get done, this is to do with this fall, basically, would this be the prime, I mean, you'd have to forego a bit of fall ball, but, or, but as opposed to, I know waiting to do it in the spring, you never know when spring's going to come, and they want to start, you guys want to start as soon as you can in the spring, so is this something we, you'd like to do this fall?
Absolutely. Uh, Dan has been in contact with Molitor about the possibility of them doing it in the fall, and, and they're ready. Um, the, um, it, there, there is a benefit to doing it, uh, in the fall, it allows the field, all of that new lime, to settle over the winter, uh, versus doing it in the spring, uh, all of that new material being put down and then played on right away is not ideal.
So, I'd really like to get a consensus from the Board. I think we have a consensus on the skinning, there's a clear consensus from the Board that we would approve, um, coming forward and awarding a bid to, we, we'd have to actually take a step to do that, but, uh, if there's a recommended contractor for the skinning, if there's three proposals on the fencing and there's a recommended, whether it's the lowest qualified bidder or a fencing company that has done outstanding work, and we're, we're willing to do that in these smaller projects that could get it done, but I, I kind of need a consen- a consensus on the Board about whether or not we, it's part of the scope of work for the skinning part of the field, but I don't, in, it's a, you know, relatively small portion or cost of it, but I, I don't want to mislead the league if we're going to, we shouldn't have them put them in if we're not going to let them use it, so we, I think I need to get a consensus on the seventy-foot bases and the, the older kids playing on it, so. I think Trustee Ketchmark was clear on his direction on that.
I defer to those who no one understands how twelve-year-olds hit.
I'm not ready yet, I gotta, I gotta think about it.
Okay. Trustee Kalusny?
I agree with the first two things.
Okay, and not the third thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an opinion on the, on the basis.
Okay. Well, I, it's kind of putting, I mean, so I've got one trustee, two trustees that are, you know, saying basically they don't approve the seventy, and the others are, I don't know if you're saying you need more time or deferring, I mean, we can put this over for a further meeting, it's, it's, I guess it's going to delay the work another couple of weeks, or, you know, if you, if you want it to the next committee of the whole or something like that.
Can you, can you separate out the seventy-foot bases?
But that's part of the bid for the, the company that does the, um, skinning, does the, the base paths, that's part of when they put together an infield back, that's, they put in the base post, that's part of their proposal. So, it would be done at the same time.
Well, I'm not clear then. I thought we were trying to break them out separate, so they would need a new proposal?
No, I, I think the proposal with Molitor or Fields would, of, the Sports Field could be modified just to do the improvements less the seventy-foot bases, if that's the direction the Board gave.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the proposal right here, the addition of seventy-foot posts is a, a very small, um, portion of this bid, and if I'm not mistaken, something that can also be done later, if it's approved at a later date, I think the skinning, uh, and leveling of the mound and adding of the materials, not only much bigger project, but yes, can be broken out separately than the posts.
So, I mean, the, like I said, just looking for direction from the Board so they can move forward this, they could, you know, you could authorize them to put in the seventy-foot bases now, or, you know, say, well, revisit in the future if something changes with the, the amenities in the park, but, um, or, I mean, I'm, again, it's, it, I'm looking for direction and consensus from the Board. I, like I said, I think I have two, you, when you said you're okay with the first two, Trustee Kalusny, does that mean you're not in favor of adding the seventy-foot bases?
I'm not in favor of adding the seventy-foot bases, but if everyone decided that that was a good idea, I'm not, again, the, the baseball hitting.
No, I understand, but, I mean, I'm just, I'm, again, there's, so there's two trustees with a clear view of the fifty-seventy that I have, I believe, if I'm stating correctly, Trustee Armatz is deferring to, I don't know, you said people with more experience, I think we all have a little bit of experience, even Trustee Gahuli, uh, especially Trustee Gahuli, she, uh, has experience with this, so.
I guess, I'm just, I know that we need to move on some things, not vote tonight, but now that we've heard a little bit more about this too and talked a little bit more, like, I kind of like to go out there and just need to, I just need a little more time to process it. I, I know it's a big deal, and it has been a while since I've been there, I should have gone before tonight, but.
And Trustee Hendrix says, do you have something else that needs you to help make your decision or?
No, I mean, I would like to give them approval to do the skinning and the fencing, um, I just don't have an opinion on the fifty to seventy, because, again, I don't have experience with this.
Okay. And Trustee White, did you feel the same, you, are you, I, I, I get, what I, the problem I'm getting is you're, you seem to be deferring to whatever the majority is, but we don't have a majority, we have
Right.
We have two trustees that have clearly stated their opinion, you're saying you're deferring on that issue to the majority, but there isn't a majority, there's two, and I, I would only vote if there's a tie, so. If, if you, if, 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 if more time, if two more weeks is going to help you make a decision, that's fine, I just.
Can we choose to move forward on the first two and, and just discuss in two weeks the base change?
I mean, Kevin, I'm asking you, I guess, because it, because the bit
Yeah, I would, that would definitely be my preferred path is, because like I said, I'm almost positive, if we want to add those seventy-foot base posts in two years, you know, maybe there is a viable netting system or something, we can do it later, so.
Okay.
I think that that would be the best course to approve the skinning, um, and then address the base path in, in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay. So, there's a clear consensus on the two items, so go ahead with, working out with village staff, with Luke and the village attorney about the mechanism for awarding a bid, if you have a recommended, and the basis for the recommendation, if it's Molitor, I know Dan has had some experience with Molitor, and I'm all, I, I realize that there's companies that are better than this at certain things and experience, um, so I think the Board would clearly listen to that, and then the fencing, um, I know, if you have a fencing contractor, my staff could probably help out with who we've done fencing with in the past and get quotes.
You mentioned Peerless before, Luke?
So.
Yeah.
And then, so, there's a clear consensus, Board, let's move forward with those two issues, and then, uh, I could put it up again in two weeks if, if the Board wants to discuss further whether seventy-foot base paths would be appropriate. Okay? Any update on the game?
Christine's got the
I've been vibrating in my pocket, but I don't want to be rude.
No, come on.
My husband had a leak. I haven't updated.
Oh, no.
I do want to say I really appreciate Luke's diligence with this matter, him and I have been working on this for a couple of months now, um, I really appreciate the, the drawings and, and measurements that he took, and, and President Garvey as well, your time with this, you and I have talked in depth, and the time of the Board, I really appreciate you guys helping us out with this.
And we appreciate Little League, I mean, it truly, the numbers out there and the amount of work you guys do, I mean, a lot of us know how much work you do, and I joked about being unpaid and, you know, and I love to see there's that many kids in the Challenger Program and the Little League, it's just, I, we see kids practicing, and we, we're, I'm an unabashed big baseball fan, I'm a big Little League fan, but we, I told you, we got responsibilities to other activities in town, so I live near Candy Cane Park, and there's three or four practices going on in Candy Cane Park at various spots on any given night, and I know every square inch of Eller is used, and Overhold is always booked up and stuff, so I know you guys are trying to do the best you can, and I hope you understand, we're trying to do the best
Absolutely.
We can, and your proposal of Field Four is going to make more efficiency available, so.
One hundred percent.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. If you get an update, I, you can text me.
I'll text you.
It wouldn't be rude.
We're heading over there right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay, moving on to the next item up for discussion, the next action steps concerning the acceptance of the final community center feasibility study. Again, staff prepared a very detailed memo, the Board has this, this has been a project we've been talking, but I'm going to ask Luke, uh, to go through and kind of summarize where we've been, what our options are going forward, and then we'll open it up to Board discussion, so. Luke, attempt, Stevie? Ste, okay.
Yes, thank you, President Garvey, I'll be going over our Board memo and request for discussion. As I am going over some of our talking points, agenda for this evening, uh, we are going to play the last iteration of the final concept design of the building to give us a fresh reminder of what it is we are discussing and next step. The purpose of tonight's discussion is to achieve consensus in direction from the Board on our next action step. General options were provided in the Board, to the Board and the staff memo, we'll be discussing those shortly. With the study now in our hands, staff is requesting consensus on next step. Some key findings from our final feasibility study for our community center are related to four different areas of study. These are provided in detail within the final feasibility study link located within the memo itself, but to review those key findings, we have first the evaluation of Parks and Recreation Services, uh, again, key findings from the final feasibility study. Respondents widely agreed that seventy-five percent of Parks and Recreation is, seventy-five percent of respondents agreed that Parks and Recreation are important to quality of life and enhances the sense of community. More than fifty-two percent indicated there are not enough recreation facilities in the village, about one-third disagreed that they are satisfied with current opportunities. The importance of multipurpose community center, uh, the amenities that were identified from that survey discussion and community open houses were, uh, topmost rated, health and fitness spaces, walking jogging track, gym courts, and dance and group exercise spaces. I provide that key finding as a reminder that the programming spaces, the areas identified within this community center were provided and based off of community feedback. That was not the selection of staff or Williams Architects, but taken directly from, uh, community surveys and input. Willingness, willingness to pay related to our community survey as part of the feasibility, about half of respondents indicated that they would be willing to pay either amount at the time of survey. Two amounts were proposed, a twenty-five million dollar referendum and a thirty-dollar referendum affecting the average homeowner, about two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per person a year. Almost a third would not be willing to pay, and twenty-one percent were undecided. Within the financial plan of the final community study, um, the goal for the community within that pro forma is to create revenue through its services to cover one-hundred percent of its own operating costs by year three of operation. Those are the financials you see within that business pro forma to get to the goal of one-hundred percent revenue, uh, recovery at the third-year mark. Sorry, I'm trying to do three things. As a reminder, we are in the final, um, process, we have received an R and receipt of the final community study. Bottom line is that there is an indication of community desire as well as willingness to pay, so we do need to get consensus from the Board on what that next step is. Are we taking action toward, uh, construction? Are we, um, discussing, um, continuing, uh, discussions? Or are we identifying a more formalized date, um, to get to construction? The facility design is thirty-three thousand six hundred square feet totaling twenty-five million, uh, with current cost estimates. Escalation, uh, is provided through year twenty-twenty-seven and, uh, does provide an additional two million in escalation costs, uh, at the end of that two years. Within the Board packet, we did provide some general options within next action steps that the Board can, uh, discuss for consensus. Option one is accepting the final study with no further action. Option two, accepting the final study and directing staff to identify outside funding sources. As an option within this proposed option is also identifying a minimum funding amount you would want staff to procure before taking up the discussion towards construction again. Option three is accepting the final study and identifying a bond referendum date for construction costs, additionally directing staff to identify alternative funding sources within that process. We are going to be getting into some pros and cons within each option, as well as further considerations when it comes to option three. These are, uh, base level considerations for discussion, and we are not looking for a decision on which, uh, funding mechanism to pursue or next action step, we are just looking for consensus in which option we will be directed to move forward, um, with further discussions with the Board that will be happening in the future. With no further action in option one, uh, pros are there is no immediate or future, uh, financial impact to the village. It also allows time for further planning if we do want to delay and pick the mantle back up again in further discussions, um, if not currently. The cons are delaying potential benefits of a community center, and it may reduce the momentum and community interest if delayed too long. With option two, seeking outside funding, again, with the option of procuring a minimum identified amount, pros include reducing the reliance on the general fund and the potential to sear, secure grants and donations. The cons would be, uh, funding sources may be limited. It is typical for a construction of a facility this size, um, and costs to recover about five to ten percent, uh, within outside funding mechanisms beyond the general fund, um, is typical. It can go up to twenty percent in rare instances, uh, but those are considered outliers for, um, really, um, atypical projects. May further delay projects, the project outside of identified escalation costs. Were provided cost estimates through the next two years, if delayed beyond the next two years, uh, the financial impact is kind of unknown beyond that, unless you want to continue to allocate a four percent escalation, and then we can kind of revisit estimates if beyond two-year outlook. Some further considerations in option two, if directing staff to procure outside funding, uh, with the option of a minimum dollar amount, um, these are some of the resources we would use to, uh, procure any additional capital funding sources. These are provided and in additional detail within the final feasibility study, but calling them out here for Board consideration and your discussion, there are, um, federal and state grants that could be sourced as an additional funding mechanism to the project. Option three, bond referendum. Bottom line, this facility and its current cost of $25 million is not going to be able to be built without a, some sort of referendum or some combination of funding mechanisms to include a referendum. We're going to give you general pros and cons. However, we are going to get into some funding scenarios within option three, bond referendum. We're not looking for a decision on which scenario is the most liked or would like to pursue. They're provided to the board for consideration in your discussion for the feasibility of option three. What does that look like? Pros in option three for bond referendum, this is a direct path to funding construction. It also demonstrates a commitment to the project. The cons, $25 million costs impact residents directly. Right now, estimates are $265 annually for the average homeowner, which means there may be some that pay a little more, and there may be some that pay a little less depending on their home value and property tax rates. This may affect funding for other capital projects. This is a very large undertaking of a capital project. We do still have other infrastructure projects that are ongoing, already engaged or are in potential discussions for future implementation. And we do have limiting bonding capacity until 2030. Difficult to see here, this table is provided in your board packet as well. This is our current bond schedule. That first column is what the issue was for. The second column is the total amount of that issue. The third column is our max annual debt service to that issue. And the fourth column, and what we would probably want to pay most attention to in our discussion this evening, is the final payment date for that bond issue to be up and ready for reallocation toward a separate project. Brookfields, we can consider municipal bond issuance, either general obligation or specific purpose bonds as a long-term financing strategy, and we'll get into that in the next couple slides. But this would secure the necessary capital upfront for a structured repayment plan over the facility's lifecycle. And we'll get a little more into that. With option three, providing a bond strategy option to kind of illustrate what that would look like to the board with giving two examples. One is the earliest we would be able to take any action, and that is 2027. So the earliest we would be able to take any formal action for referendum would be 2027. At that time, $12 million within our bond issuance available at the same tax levy rate as 2016 would be made available. This would leave a $13 million gap in total costs currently, and we can bridge that gap through capital funding source options, considering additional bond issuance via referendum. And to be further scoped out, but this is a point for discussion, we do need to meet for more detail from our bond consultants as increasing the years of debt service obligation can yield a higher amount of proceeds while maintaining the same tax rate. So there are a number of different major and nuanced ways to approach funding for the facility, providing the earliest action and impacts and later action and impact. Latest would be the 2031 option in referendum. This would make available $25 million in bond issuance available at the same tax rate levy as 2016. Would not include the anticipated cost escalations, and that gap would need to be met. This option will decrease tax rate for residents for at least two consecutive years in '28 and '29 prior to full bond issuance after the 2030 obligations are paid. So we would essentially be ignoring, not ignoring, that second row in the table, tax rate would go down because that bond issuance would be fully paid. The following year, 2028, that bond issuance would be paid, tax rate would go down. And then when the next bond issuance is up, we can go to referendum and access the funds that the previous amounts were paid on, which would allow residents to have a brief decline in tax rate if that is the option you would choose to pursue before requesting referendum for the $25 million bond issuance. If consensus of the board is provided, we can proceed with obtaining further bond issuance funding scenarios and details from our bond consultants, and we can bring these strategies back to the board. Again, for the purpose of this evening, just looking for consensus from the board on either no action, procuring funding only without identifying a formal or planned referendum, or option three, anticipating pursuit of a referendum and directing the board to get more detail in the funding strategies there. That's it.
Thank you, Stevie, and a very good job of laying it out. And obviously, this is something a lot of resident time, staff time, and board time has been spent on. And you did a very good job of framing the big picture issue. I mean, in simplest terms, we don't have the bonding capacity to go out to a referendum and ask for the full amount because we have outstanding obligations. And if people, you know, recognize what those are, those are the bonds that we sold to pay for the street improvements that we've done over the years to get us. And the way we did it back then, there was the separate bond issues where we sold them to complete. And we, this board and staff lived up to the promise to use that money for the streets. And we've improved the streets as promised and continue to do so, and we're finishing that work up now. But the bond payments will still go on till the 2028 scenario. But we made it clear when we passed that referendum and we asked the voters for that referendum that that was to get the streets to the position that they should be in. We were clear that it wouldn't keep the streets in that condition forever under the funding that we were using for maintenance back then. So we were clear that there will be a need if we want to continue to maintain the streets at the level we have them for years to come. That referendum years ago was made necessary because streets weren't being done on a regular basis. They weren't being improved. They weren't being upkept. I feel like we're really at the point where our streets are where they should be. But once this bond referendum expires, we do have some money to maintain the streets. But in speaking, there have been meetings going on about this internally for quite a while. And speaking to Hancock Engineering and staff and public work staff, if these street referendum amounts expire, the amount of money that we can take out of the general fund and MFT funds to maintain the streets going forward will cause us to fall behind in the future. So we will have to consider what other funding sources do we have for street improvements going forward to keep them at the level that they're at and plan for future replacement going forward on a cyclical basis as they should be done. So that could complicate the issue of, okay, let these bonds expire and then try and use these towards a community center. And to just throw further, you know, problems into the mix, there's this little topic about the alleys that comes up every once in a while. We have not been paving alleys just because we have not had the funds or the bonding capacity to do funds, and the specialist assessment process that we've used is not sparked enough alleys getting done or even enough alleys coming forward with having the residents pay, a large share and the village pay the share. So going forward, we've also had internal conversations about this on how we pave the remaining alleys. And not to be gloom and doom and sticker shock and everything else for years, you know. And Derek, I believe, gave me years ago, gave me a legitimate estimate how much it would cost to pave the remaining unpaved alleys in the Village of Brookfield. And I can't honestly tell you how many years ago that was just because I've been around so long and I've asked that question. But previously, I was given a figure of about $30 to $40 million to pave the remaining alleys in the village that are not paved. Realistically, the estimate, and it's truly back of the envelope rough estimate right now, is over $100 million to pave the remaining alleys. So community center is an issue, and it's, I think it has a lot of support going forward. But we have to, I think what Stevie did a good job of talking about was due to our bonding capacity, expiring bond, other issues and other capital projects needing to be funded, we'd like, we don't have the benefit of looking at each of these issues in isolation. If we make a decision to focus on a referendum for Parks and Recreation Center, it would be to the exclusion of other projects going forward in the future. And staff will take whatever direction the board gives and look at other options. But I just, I guess I wanted to kind of really just put that out more for the public than anything else. These are the issues that we're grappling with. And even, you know, I know there's some people that might be disappointed that even under the best-case scenario, doing nothing else, that the earliest we can go out to referendum if we were interested would be 2027, and that wouldn't fund the full project. We'd require another referendum after that if we went through the referendum payment part. But that, even under the best-case scenario, if we let the streets bond expire, don't use any of that money or seek to extend that for street work or alley work, 2027 is the earliest that we can come up with a $12 million bond issue, which covers just barely half the project at that point. So just wanted to throw that out there, open it up. I mean, staff did a very good job of laying out the options and direction that we're looking for tonight. So I'm just going to open it up to the board for discussion, trying to get consensus on. As Stevie laid it out in the memo, option one, option two, option three is open for discussion.
Can I ask about the option that's up on the screen now? So this is the, you're saying this is the fastest way we could get to that particular goal of putting up a rec center? And that would include the 2027 referendum? But the 2027 referendum only covers $12 million of what would then be a $27 million facility in 2027 because of the additional $2 million, which aren't factored into this slide. And I don't understand in this scenario where the additional 13 or 15 million would come from.
That would be a portion of other funding mechanisms. So pursuing grant opportunities, submitting for community project funding, any federal grant opportunities, funding resources, that is the issue.
Okay.
It leaves a significant 13 to $15 million gap that needs to be covered through.
Or another potential bond issue, but that couldn't happen till 2030, I think you mentioned in your memo. That we could, in 2030, we could potentially ask for another referendum question to get an additional 14.
Sure. And I think that it was said that we could hope for 5% to 10% of the project to be funded through those outside sources, which is considerably less than 15 million. I think that there's, that it would be really problematic to have to go to, for a referendum for half of a rec center. And then again, later, go back and say, hey, we'd like a referendum for the rest of the rec center. That, for me, that's, I think that's a non-starter. But I'm curious to hear what everybody else says about the rest of the discussion.
I think it would be helpful for me to see the, this, and these details next to the other capital projects so we can look at all of them against each other to see what we're prioritizing and how much is left on each and what's the timeline for this in comparison to those. I know that we have a lot going on, but I don't necessarily have a clear view on what the, what the end dates are for each of those and what's left to pay for and so forth.
We could definitely do that. We will do that if the board desires. And to Trusty Hendrick's point, which I understand completely, we have not talked to bond council yet. We have not strategized as to how to best optimize. I agree with you. It doesn't make sense to go for a referendum. We're just going to ask for half now, and if they give it to us yes, then we're just banking on a yes vote in three years. That's not sound planning. We have not, as I said, I don't know what the board wants to do. So we haven't expended a lot of staff time. We certainly haven't invested time talking with bond council. But we will, if that's the direction of the board, we can come back with a lot more thought-out, better strategies and better, well-thought-out options. We just haven't done that yet. We don't know what the board wants to do.
I think if there are options that, that could achieve the goal of the 25 or 27 million that it would require, I think we would like to understand those options so that we can see the whole picture and see what we would be giving up as far as maintaining the infrastructure that we have now.
I think that's my, my struggle too, is what President Garvey brought up, are other infrastructure projects that are future-looking that I don't understand the cost and scope of. And so is it deciding between these things or deciding how we can do all of these things over time? I came more prepared to talk about this one thing tonight, but I don't, I don't know the scope of those other projects that you mentioned and when those come into play. So I'd love to have a bigger picture of that because I do think it's a big decision. And I agree, going for two referendums sounds dicey. So if we were going to go for one, I'd love to figure out how we could do that and the soonest possible to pay for all of it.
And we have obligations over the next few years with, with the OSLAD grants that have been won and the matches on those things, and then the potential for the second OSLAD grant for South Kuanis. I know that there was a hope that we could go for that, but there was a lot of cost to the village associated with that as well. I think, again, I'd like to see a bigger picture.
Absolutely. Those projects are funded out of our general fund and match. So we wouldn't necessarily include those.
Okay.
If you're just requesting the large capital project.
If we were to choose option three, I mean, we would be directing staff to have further conversations with bond council and develop, further develop these scenarios or alternative scenarios.
Correct. What we provided was the earliest action and the gap in what that affects. The latest action to encapsulate the full bond maximum issuance and to highlight the length of time disparity and to let you know there, it will affect other capital projects.
Right. Well, we wouldn't be committing to any of these scenarios, obviously, right now. And there's potential for other scenarios to be developed. To me, option two is not really a feasible option. This is approving the study and pursuing outside funding. I kind of would view that, it seems similar to option one because we know that it's very likely, outside funding is only likely to raise 5% to 10%, maybe 20% in the best-case scenario. So like you said, the core of the funding still would need to come from a bond issuance. So I mean, that, it just seems like we're delaying the decision, which would be the same as what we're doing with, with option one.
And I appreciated Stevie listing the possible outside funding sources because have you looked at them? I mean, there's programs, we're familiar with DECO's, a state program, and I forgot what the second one, it was part of the OSLAD or something. But there were several federal programs in there. And without getting into too much, I suggest the board not to think that the state of Illinois is going to get a lot of federal funding at any time in the future, immediate future, based on, I mean, just, I think we've expressed concern about that with the lead service and federal programs that we've questioned federal funding coming to Illinois. So I think, appreciated Stevie listing those things. I'm all in favor of searching for sponsorships and grant programs, but I think Trusty Whitehead's correct. It's not really, by going with that option and that option alone, you're not really saying you're moving this forward in any way.
And I understand the, the need to consider other priorities. I just think we should discuss the really tremendous community value of this center. I think it's a huge gap in our community right now that we don't have an indoor recreation space, that everybody. space, that everybody can enjoy. We invest so much in our parks, and our parks are awesome, unfortunately, because of the weather, they're not used by many residents for much of the year, right? As a result, everybody from young kids, teenagers, to older adults, does not have a place to gather, does not have a place to be in community, does not have a place to support one another. And I think a center like this could provide tremendous value in terms of the physical health and the mental health of nearly every resident of Brookfield if they were to take advantage. And I think we, we have some really compelling data in the study that this is a, a good moment for us to move forward, because there is already substantial support from residents, interest from residents, I should say, in pursuing this further, and, you know, a desire for, for an asset like this. So, I understand the issue of competing priorities, and I share a desire to, to, to have more information about those priorities. I also worry, like, if not now, when, right? Like, if, for, for me to be in favor of delaying action, I would like an understanding of, like, when do we think would be a better opportunity than now to revisit this? Because based on what we know now, I don't see us necessarily being in a better position a year or two years from now, to just have further conversations with bond council and explore the referendum option.
I don't know that option three would be the best course of action without seeing things in totality. I know staff has been working on long-term infrastructure funding options, which President Garby mentioned, are unbelievable amounts of money going forward. I mean, we're in pretty good shape right now. But without looking at all of that together, I don't see how we can pursue, you know, issuing, you know, going after a bond referendum for the rec center. I think we need to see it all together, and then we're picking and choosing, or coming up with a strategy of how we do it all. But without looking at those other items, I, I don't know how we do that. You know, I mean, you know, there is a lot of support for the rec center, absolutely. But we have other issues that we're trying to deal with too, so I think we have to look at it all together.
And I think the wording of option three, I mean, I, it's not, if we choose option three, we're doing a bond referendum, it's, it's, but maybe it's kind of a hybrid of two or, you know, or three, three A, ask staff to study possible referendum issues, but maybe then we bring in, and, you know, I'm throwing this out there, and I want to put Tim and Doug on the spot, but maybe we can have a committee session that kind of starts to talk about some of the issues we've talked about with Derek, and the street issue, the alley issue, and what our options are, what those expiring bonds coming up, and what we could do to continue the street program the way we would like to, what the various hybrid options are. I'm not, because we haven't reached the level in our, our internal meetings where we have a, a clear path or a clear idea of what that would cost, but maybe, Tim, do you think that we could do some kind of hybrid, do the general presentation about the expiration of the street bonds? And this would require giving staff the direction, because at that, while we've talked about those issues, we really haven't gone to bond council yet unless it's happened since the last meeting about our options there. But I think Trusty Ghulie mentioned it too, it's hard to make a decision on this without knowing the other option. It's in fairness to the board, you know, they haven't been involved, these have just been very high-level theoretical discussions about what we, what we have to do with the streets. And, and the alleys, you know, this board hasn't specifically discussed alley issues going forward. I think it's a topic that was on the radar, maybe, when some of us got elected again, but honestly, the lead service replacement and the water main projects, you know, I don't think I need to remind the board how much work we've done, but we've had to pay for all this work. And the, the, you know, I think all of us agree that between the water main replacement, we have hundred-year-old water mains, which is a basic obligation we have to the residents to provide safe water, that was a clear priority. The board chose to do that. The lead service was a federal mandate that we had to do, but we also agreed that it's something that needed to be done. And I, I trust all of you would agree that those things would be a priority ahead of a recreation center or anything else, and we've taken those steps. But maintaining those things going forward, now, I think we need to balance the need for a recreation center and funding it with continued street projects, so we don't put future boards and future generations in the problems that some of us inherited, where we had to make up for years of not having a program in place. And I think we at least need to talk about the alley issue. I mean, they, it, it comes up often, it's been a little bit of a drier spring and summer, but we know we all get the requests and everything else when it comes in, when it rains, and how bad the alleys are, and they are bad.
I, I guess I have a question then, and maybe this is a bigger question, is, I was, I'm very excited about the community center, and I think we got everyone excited. We put a lot of money into a feasibility study, and we all knew it was going to be a lot of money. And so, I guess I'm, if that was all going to be a problem in the end, now we're in a place where we were going to do streets and all these things, and now we got, have a community and a board excited about this center, was, was, I guess, I'm thinking of, like, what was going to be the strategy to pay for this if not option three?
So, the unknowns going into the community center, center feasibility was the size, the cost, what types of programming does the community want to see in there? Is it sustainable after construction to provide programs that will have cost recovery for revenues and expenditures? That is the purpose of the feasibility study. So, what we learned throughout the study was, we can sustain a facility of thirty-three thousand square feet to include the priority amenities the community said they wanted in there. So, that is how we got to this point. We needed that feasibility and discovery of what are the community's desires, and what can we fiscally sustain post-construction. Now that we have those knowns, it is hard decisions to have to consider, and now knowing the total cost, pit up against already engaged or future capital planning. So, we did not know the cost of it, the size of it, the location of it. There was potential that Williams could come back, following that survey and community engagement, and looking at our financials existing, that they would say, this is not feasible for your community.
Sure.
So, we've answered a number of those questions, and now, unfortunately, it, it is a high-cost project.
Got it. I guess I'm, I, I thank you for phrasing that, and I guess I under, I understand that, but if, if we knew in 2027 we'd only be able to pull a twelve million dollar referendum, then, then I guess I'm wondering if that, that part of the budget should have been part of the feasibility, or, or we kind of gave them an open cost?
We have twenty-five million in max bonding authority. And that is the number that was used within that survey engagement to say, with that max bonding authority, which we can achieve in 2030 as an option, are you willing to pay for that? That question needed to be asked, and it needed a price point to say, what is the max bonding authority? And can we sustain something of that size? So, it's related, but does push further conversation that's in need of some additional detail.
Thank you.
I think there's always going to be opportunity costs doing something like this, always. We're always going to have infrastructure issues and maintenance to do. And I understand planning, right, and needing to prioritize, you know, lead service and water main improvements and streets. But to say you can never, we, we don't, we can't do something else without proper planning, I, I think, I'm hopeful that we can find a solution. And I would vote for option three with a bigger, better picture of what those opportunity costs are exactly, and what we might need, how, how we're going to implement it versus just saying, well, we can't, because we have, we have to allocate money, a specific amount of money for, for streets, or whatever it is. I, I mean, if it can't be done, it can't be done, and that's fine, and we make that decision. But I don't think, I feel like we've come this far, and we just need, like everyone has been saying, we need a better idea of what the scope of the opportunity costs are, and whether it's feasible, like reasonably feasible to continue forward with, with the community center.
So, again, is anyone in favor of option one, where we accept the study and take no further action at this time? Table it for now and bring it up again in the future? Is anyone in favor of that option?
No.
No.
Okay. There's a clear consensus, option one isn't available. And, I mean, option two, just look for the outside funding sources at this time before taking any additional steps. Is there a consensus of the board that is in favor of that type of option?
No.
No.
No. Because it's only a portion of the funding.
No, but, I mean, that has to be part of this though, too, right?
Yes.
Right.
That's why, I guess my point, when you brought up option three, I think it's more how we define option three. It's, I, I fully understand where I sit and what I do. You, you six get to make the big decisions, and he, how we vote and stuff going forward. But it would be remiss if we didn't give you, as Trusty Nairman, as you mentioned, the opportunity costs. If we just, you know, staff has told you that by 2030, the street bond referendum will be off, and we can go to the residents and ask for thirty million dollars, and we could, if they approve, we could build a rec center. But what we would be doing if we didn't talk about the other topics, we would be saying, we don't care, we're not thinking about or planning how we're going to maintain streets going forward, and we're saying, we're not addressing, even talking about the alley issue. I feel like it's my job and staff's job to give you those. And I, I want to tell you, it's in a very raw form. We can't tell you that this is how much the alleys are going to cost, this is how much. We have a better picture of what the streets need to maintain going forward at the pace we did, we could do that, but the alleys, I think it's something we could talk about, and you could choose, again, weighing out the options, this, some of this, some of that, a hybrid, that type of thing. While staff is, and again, now I think we're getting to the point where we do need to talk to bond council to get further options in terms of all of these things together, so.
I guess it comes down to how, how we, each of us are defining option three. I mean, I define option three as giving direction to staff to have those conversations with bond council, and what I was hearing from them is, that's what would happen as a result of us approving option three.
But, but it would be, option three with, the bond council would also be aware of the other issues in terms of street bonds expiring and other possible capital obligations the village might be considering going forward. And again, I think at some point, we can have a base-level discussion with the board, a presentation, and it, I delivered some bad, maybe some bad news or scary news tonight, it'd probably be, you know, even scarier when Derek and Doug present it, in terms of what, what the options are for streets and alleys going forward. But it's something we have to do, this, this is, we've got to fit it all into, so, I, I think Trusty Whitehead's right, I understand Trusty Ketchmark's concerns, but I think I'm looking at the option three the same way you are, it's giving them some direction to further the conversations about our bonding referendum issues, with the caveat that we have to consider other capital obligations in it, or we wouldn't be responsible.
Just to clarify, Trusty Whitehead's question, I, I thought it would be presumptuous of me and staff to start conversations with bond councils to fund a rec center that I'm not, I wasn't sure if the board was going to support it or not. I'm always conscious of, and Doug is conscious of, we have other capital needs in the village as well.
Right.
I was prepared to talk about what, what President Garby brought up, but there are issues such as alleys. We can have money available. If we did the rec center, didn't do the alleys, we have money available to fund certain number of street improvements every year. Would not be as aggressive as what we've done, and we could present that next time we talk to the board as well. There are trade-offs to all of this. We have a finite resources, which is money. And unless we have another, or a large grant, which we don't, as Stevie referenced, is probably not out there, we have to understand that there's opportunity costs. If we pursue, if the rec center is the priority, then we may have to, the, the water stuff is, is taken care of, because we have dedicated funding sources, and, and that's, that's good. It really may become an option of alleys or rec center. And we can flesh out for you what that would mean, or how, you know, what the impacts of that will be. We'll, we'll flesh out more if, if the board's consensus is, is option three. We'll invite Derek to come to these discussions, and, and he needs to outline the ongoing capital things, as well as we can have a financial, whether it be bond council or financial person to say, what are the debt ratios and debt limits and impacts to the tax rate that we would have? Again, I've had those conversations, because I wasn't sure what the board wanted to do.
I just, I want to be careful, because I think you said it correct earlier, but saying that it could come down to alleys versus a rec center, I think in that option, it's rec center versus alleys and a reduced street program that's not the recommended maintenance replacement schedule that would keep us where we're at and keep us going. I think, based on the numbers that I've seen, we could not fund a rec center without some additional, I mean, we cannot fund street improvements at the recommended level going forward, ignoring alleys, without some additional funding that we would have just in the general fund going forward. And that, I may be wrong on that, but I, I just don't want it to be it's either alleys or a rec center at this point. I don't think, I know you didn't say it that way, but I don't even want to pretend that that's just a strict formula.
Right. Because I, and to Trusty Kaluzny's point, like, we knew it was going to be somewhere around here when we started this process, right? And we knew about the needs for the alleys before, we knew about the streets before, so, it really shouldn't be an either-or at this point, because we knowingly went into this, knowing all of those things. So, why would we have gotten this far? Do you know what I mean? Like, there's, there's got to be somewhere where we could balance this out a little bit, even if it's just maybe prolonging to 2030 or something like that, that we, you know, we plan for it. Always, of course, look for alternatives, you know, funding sources. And the difference between two and three, too, is the other one says, do that prior to any additional actions.
Right.
Or option three, it just, you know, after we, you know, get all the bond information, still always pursue, you know, the additional.
But I just, I mean, we, I think everyone pursued this with eyes wide open about the Parks and Recreation Center. All of us knew or should have known, I mean, we did know that streets and alleys and other, and I even hate to speak the words into existence, what other things could come up, what other new federal unfunded federal mandate could come up, or, God forbid, what other major capital project that we didn't plan on has to happen due to natural disaster, something like that. You know, these are, this is why we have to make the, you know, and it'll be difficult decisions, but it, it's not, and I don't think anyone's saying, it's like, well, we should have thought of this ahead of time that we have streets and sewers. We did. It was just this feasibility study, as Stevie explained, was necessary. We, this, we might not be talking about this seriously tonight if the study came back and said, building a twenty-five million dollar rec center that you want is not feasible, because you couldn't sustain it going forward. That may have been the recommendation, and that might have made our lives a little bit easier, but that's, we didn't know we were going to get that answer until we got the feasibility study, so.
I think it is fair, though, to be frustrated that we were looking at a twenty-five million dollar bond issue as our, as our maximum, when the feasibility study was looking at numbers for this year, knowing that it was going to be two million more in 2027, and not factoring into the, the accounts, that we would not have that ability to, to issue that kind of a bond until 2030, where the cost is even going to be higher. So, I think that there is, it's understandable, I think, that there's some frustration. But I think what, what I'm hearing from everyone is that we need more information.
I think that's, that is clear, but I think the consultant delivered exactly what they were, I mean, did not give us what the figure would be at this point, and they, they built an escalation clauses in what it could be going forward, I think is part of, I mean, we didn't ask them to give us a price, what would this be to build it in 2030? We didn't ask them that, we asked them the current price and the current.
It's not a criticism of the consultants.
Well, when I heard there was disappointment, it seemed like it's something that should have been anticipated, and I think it was anticipated. I mean, I know that staff knew, and I know our consultant knew, that we did not have twenty-five million dollars sitting in the bank, but we did ask for a price with escalation clauses, so, I just, maybe I heard the term disappointment wrong, like it's something that could have been avoided, but I think we got exactly what we asked for.
I, I did not use the term disappointment, I think I said frustration.
Okay. Sorry, that's correct, you did use frustration.
I think my frustration is just that twenty-five million, you know, if that's our, our limit, and we knew we had other costs, then maybe that wasn't, shouldn't have been the limit of the. of the feasibility. Because that's all in, I mean, now that we know that, I mean, I guess I should have assumed there were other costs, but those weren't taking, those weren't part of the conversation at the time.
Right.
Okay. So I guess we've given pretty, I mean, I think there's a consensus, we want to move forward, we want to get additional conversations, we want to direct you to start talking to bond counsel, but, and also the board needs to start hearing more about the issues that we knew were coming. And again, I think there may be some disappointment or frustration, obviously, that we won't be able to give you concrete figure, and I hate to use that term, figure, exact figures as to what streets and alleys. We have a better picture of what it takes to maintain the streets going forward, but any alley paving options, you know, going forward, village-wide programs or even the special assessment process going forward and the feasibility, knowing that, I mean, just the 100, $100 million figure, we're talking about a $25 million rec center, but we also know we have $100 million right now, probably this year. And let's not even talk, we could talk about the escalation if we put those alleys off for two years, five years, 10 years, what they're going to be. So it's something we need to talk about.
I think it's really hard for me to wrap my head around alleys versus rec center. Like, the, I mean, alleys have been an issue in this town forever. And I, I mean, I guess I get why we want, we, everyone wants alleys, right? But I think to pit it and to frame it as an alleys versus rec center problem is, or street maintenance, seems like we didn't foresee that that would be an issue coming up.
And just so it's good, the board can decide to continue to do nothing about alleys going forward. We can, we had one alley paving petition coming forward and staff was hesitant to do it because the process is the old special assessment process. And in terms of us budgeting, do we want to continue to do an alley with the cost estimates for a special assessment, one alley, which will then reduce our cost of the remaining alleys to 99 million, you know, 400,000 or something like this? Or should we, some point, at some point, we at least got to talk about it. You, you as a board may say, alleys are not a priority. We can continue, and during the conversation, staff, Lauren and her staff and Doug will be able to tell you how much a year we spend on maintenance, supplies, materials and labor to maintain the alleys in the existing condition that they are. And do we want to keep doing that, you know, going forward? There is a cost to the alleys being the way they are now. And, I mean, if, we all know that alleys have been an issue, if you don't, and I think you do, I know you do, you get the calls, you get the requests, you get the things of, you know, I've had people say, when are we going to do something about the alleys, probably several times a week? So it is something you guys can decide, rec center is more important, streets are more important, let's not do alleys, let's, and that's, that could be a very informed decision, but you have to know the possibilities and what the costs are and the opportunity costs, so.
I agree with Trusty Hendricks. I just wasn't prepared to have an alley conversation tonight because we don't have any numbers. I was, and so I'm happy to have that conversation in the future. It's just not in this packet. And so I think to go back to this more information and having the whole picture, happy to have that conversation. It's just not been on a board or committee of the hall to talk about how to pay for alleys since I've been here.
Yeah. I don't think anyone is intending this. I don't think it should get in the way of our, the board's interests in the community center and the value of that project to the community. And I think it is always going to be difficult to finance a project like this. And you all have been on, or several of you have been on this board much longer than I have and have a better understanding of the, of how the village can confront financial challenges like this. But I don't have a sense that this challenge, financial challenges are going to be any easier a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. So that's why I'm interested in option three and, in providing direction to staff to have further conversations with, with bond counsel, develop these scenarios so that we can understand the trade-offs. And we don't understand, I mean, the alley concept needs to, I think we all agree, needs to be better defined, right? In terms of how, you know, that, but this cost is potentially four or five times the cost of the community center. And then how quickly could we, alleys be paved over time, right? So it's a, it's a real issue and we should better define it. But I don't think that takes away from the potential value of, of the center.
Absolutely. I mean, and I think that's why we need more information. And, you know, the fact that alleys weren't mentioned, I mean, Stevie did mention that, that, you know, to the exclusion of other capital projects and other capital projects. I could have not said anything about streets and alleys, but that would not be, you would not have appreciated that or, I mean, I've had these conversations with you about this that it is something we need to talk about. So let's definitely, again, I, and I, I don't think anyone implied that if we wait three years, that we think it's going to be a better situation. I think we can all agree that we know it's not going to be a better situation or we'd be in a better position if we put it off for three years because we learned that from the streets decades ago and we've learned that from the alleys. The $40 million alley is now the 100, 100 million alley. So if we put off the rec center, the $25 million rec center will become the 45, 50 million rec center. So I think we're all on the same page. We just need more information. And the information we'll be able to talk about with streets and alleys is not going to be firm, but it just gives you a better picture of how everything fits in. Clear enough? Direction from, just bring it forward.
Yes, thank you.
Again, so much work has been put into this and it's exciting and seeing that animation up there again, just kind of makes it even more, you know, wanting us to have something happen here, so.
I'm just looking at Doug's face and his head is spinning.
We do that to Doug every meeting, so. Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for the, that ends the items up for discussion. Is there any, I'll open up the public comment. Is there any public comment on this side? Yes. Mr. Clark, are you able to come, yeah, anything?
Anything at all?
Yeah. Well, anything village-related. Or, I'm sorry, is that Dave?
I'll need a real quick.
Oh, I thought that was someone else. Okay.
What's going on?
If you could come up to the microphone, please, so I can state your name, please.
Mike Lehman.
Okay.
L E H M A N. What's going on with the two empty lots, former Emo's gas station on Brookfield Avenue near, past Grand Boulevard? And then the Congress Park, huge monster lot by the train station. What's exactly going on? Is that you folks?
We, we own the Congress Park, own most of the Congress Park site. We are, have developed, we're talking, we're in development talks with various groups and have various proposals. We've recently acquired more land over there. And I'm sorry, the other site you were asking about is?
Was the, I was a friend, family friend, Emo, Emo, it was a gas station.
On Maple?
The Triangle?
Yeah, the triangle piece next, it's an empty lot. They always say the ugliest thing in the downtown city is an empty lot.
But the triangle, right by Sebastian's, right by the Prairie Avenue train stop, that triangle piece you're talking about?
Yeah, you know where the garage is, the big garage, the garage?
The zoo garage, yes, yes.
And then there was a former Fisher's Pharmacy.
Oh, Fisher's Pharmacy, that dist office was there. No, so that we, we have a development that's been up, passed the preliminary plan development for a large-scale development that includes the garage that was previously owned by the zoo. Developer owns all of that. They've gone through the preliminary plan development that includes retail restaurant space on the first floor and three, or three or four stories of residence. They should be coming forward next month for the final plan development and most likely breaking construction in the spring.
Oh, so that one's pretty, pretty much a done deal, that, that lot?
Yes.
Yeah, it was Emo's gas station, our friend.
Okay.
For years. But Congress Park is still up for grabs.
We've recently, in the past months, did acquire some other properties right there to piece everything together. So we have had developers over the years and now that we inquire more property, there's further discussions going on there, so.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Anyone else on this side? Is there any need for executive session, Tim?
Nope.
Okay. I regret to inform everybody that Brookfield lost in the eighth inning, six to five on a walk-off by Lyons Township. So it went two extra innings and they lost six to five. So congratulations to the Orange Crushers on a great season. Congratulations to Lyons Township on winning the overhaul tournament. All right, that adds the items we have up. At 9:14, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the hall meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Trusty Kahuli, second by Trusty Naromatsu. Roll call, please.
Sir. Trusty Ketchmark.
Hi.
Trusty Whitehead.
Hi.
Trusty Hendricks.
Aye.
Trusty Naromatsu.
Aye.
Trusty Kahuli.
Aye.
Trusty Kalusny.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're adjourned at 9:14 PM. Thank you, everybody.